Alderman Totten. Here. Alderman Scully.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Their executive board is standing there.
Next item on agenda is an invocation by Pastor Daryl Jones from the Crossroads Church, then followed by a pledge of allegiance from Alderman Totten.
Let's pray together. God, so often we come to you and we bring our needs and we bring our wants and I just want to take this moment with our leaders and some of our interested community folks to just give you thanks for the things that you do. Thanks for the breadth that we have, the life we live, the health that we have to be here tonight. God, for a community that despite its problems, a community that gets along, loves each other, cares about each other, takes care of each other's needs. God, I thank you for things like our GBAC and our chamber and our aldermen and the things involved in our community that brings us together. And so many times it's so easy for us to take credit for the good things and they give you the credit for all the bad things. And I just want to give you credit tonight, God, for doing the good things. And I pray for this meeting. I ask for your grace and your mercy on behalf of each of these leaders sitting before us. God, as they transact business tonight, as they make decisions, as they represent their words and the residents that are in their words, God, I pray for integrity and character. God, I pray for honesty and the good of the community to prevail over special interests and over all the things that can sometimes bog us down. And especially, we all know this squeaky wheel usually gets the grease. And so, God, I pray that you would allow our leaders to be able to sift through those things as they make tough decisions for our community, for our growth, for tough economic times. And I just thank you for them and the time that they give and volunteer themselves for a job that is in many, many ways, a very thankless job. So I pray your blessings on them tonight as they watch over our community and make decisions for our future. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Yes, I did want to let the mayor and board know that the agenda correctly lists B-12-14. However, the background paperwork states B-11-14. Therefore, I would like to amend the paperwork that is attached to correctly state B-12-14 for the purchase of radio equipment. That's going to change something. Oh, there's one more. And just to clarify for the board that an executive session is needed this evening under 1602-131 under B-14.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? First of all, Alderman West, I have a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion on the amended agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Next item is citizen participation. We ask citizens to come forth to the podium or microphone and address the board. Do I have any citizens who wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, move on to consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I have motion Alderman Scully to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Seeing no proclamations, we'll move on to presentations for our February Business of the Month. I have representative. For February, we would like to recognize the Brass Armadillo is our Business of the Month.
Thank you.
I know you do a lot for bringing residents or bringing citizens to town. Normally, if I wouldn't come to Grand Valley to come to the antique store and come to other stores here in town also, so I would thank you for all you do out there.
We got lots of great plans for the future, too. So we just opened our newest one in, another one in Arizona. They're going back and revisiting the communities and towns and trying to open second ones within the same, because there's two in Phoenix. So we're working on a lot of different things and we hope to be here for a long time yet to come.
Thank you. Seeing no public hearings, previous business or new business, we'll move on to ordinances.
This is Bill 12-07. It is the second reading. The ordinance 2206. It is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Allied Refreshments Incorporated for vending machine services. Second reading, ordinance 2206.
I move that we accept bill number B-12-07 for second reading, making it ordinance number 2206.
I have motion Alderman Beebe to approve Bill 12-07 for its first, for its second reading, making ordinance 2206. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Totten.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Beebe.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Bill 12-08. Second reading. It will be ordinance 2207. It is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to approve, authorize representatives and purchase from the Missouri State Agency for surplus property. Second reading, ordinance 2207.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill 12-08 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2207.
I have motion Alderman Headley to approve Bill 12-08 for its second reading, making ordinance 2207. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
West.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Beebe.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Bill B-12-09. Second reading. It will be ordinance 2208. It is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a cooperative agreement with Jackson County, Missouri for dispatching services. Second reading, ordinance 2208.
I move that we accept bill number B-12-09 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2208.
I have motion Alderman Totten to approve Bill 12-09 for its second reading, making ordinance 2208. Do I have a second? Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Beebe.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Bill B-12-10. Second reading. It will be ordinance 2209, which is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with LexiPol for knowledge management system online services. Second reading, ordinance 2209.
I move that we accept bill number B-12-10 for its second reading and bring it back for an ordinance number 2209.
I have motion Alderman Totten to approve Bill 12-10 for its second reading, making ordinance 2209. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion?
I got one question just occurred to me as I'm looking at the first year, second year payment. Is there a method, like NPR is paying for that first year? I don't know if this should be directed at you chief or Kathy. Is there something from a tickler file standpoint that you've come back and said, yeah, we're going to tag this for the budget should we deem fit for this fall so we catch that and it's not forgotten about?
Yeah, it'll have to be directed at I.
Yeah.
But I mean, have to, you know, other than remembering that or you get a notification saying any of this X dollars hopefully in time for the budget.
Yeah, I mean, the notification, I'm assuming is going to come from LexiPol that our contract's coming to an expiration date. And I'll put some back and put something on mine as well.
I mean, it's just more of a general question. It's just nice, but it just occurred to me.
Well, I could tell you that more than likely it would be remembered because it was part of Aaron's package this year when we entered into and we were talking about the check-in and the LexiPol training because we were talking about a training citywide. And LexiPol was on Aaron's list, so if he regenerates that same list for 2013, he'll have it there for review.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Totten.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Beebe.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Bill B-12-13. Second reading. It will be ordinance 2210. And it is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with validity screening solutions for employee candidate background checks. Second reading, ordinance 2210.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill number B-12-13 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2210.
I have motion Alderman Schaefer to accept Bill 12-13 for its second reading, making ordinance 2210. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Beebe.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
West. Bill B-12-11. Is this first reading?
First and second.
Okay, there's something written here, so was it table last time?
Yes.
So this is the first reading. It will also be placed back for second reading tonight. It is an ordinance authorizing the formation of an industrial development corporation in the city of Grand Valley, Missouri, and determining and approving certain matters related thereto. First reading, Bill 12-11.
I move that we accept Bill B-12-11 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion Alderman West to approve Bill 12-11 for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion?
Does that have to be on the table?
You will stay up to tonight's meeting.
Oh, okay. I knew there had to be a reason.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
First reading, the vote is six zero. Second reading, ordinance B-12-11. It will be ordinance 2211. It is an ordinance authorizing the formation of an industrial development corporation in the city of Grand Valley, Missouri, and determining and approving certain matters related thereto. Second reading, ordinance 2211.
I move that we accept Bill B-12-11 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2211.
I have motion Alderman West to approve Bill 12-11 for its second reading, making ordinance 2211. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Headley.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Beebe.
Yes.
Bill B-12-12. First reading. It is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute an ingress and egress easement with State Bank of Missouri. First reading.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill 12-12 for its first reading, bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion Alderman Headley to accept Bill 12-12 for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
I would like, I'm sorry, lady. Wanted to bring this to the attention of the board this evening. State Bank and their negotiations with MoDOT for their right of way for the interchange enhancements came to the city and discovered that they thought that there had actually been a formal agreement for an ingress egress so that as you pull through State Bank that is located immediately to the north of our facility here, that as you pull in and you circle around the building, that as you're exiting, they thought that there was an automatic ingress egress on the city's property already. And in looking at the records, they determined that there was not. So they asked MoDOT if the city would be willing to enter into a new agreement. As you'll notice in your paperwork, as attachment exhibit A, it shows approximately where that ingress egress would be. And it shows that as the improvements get ready to occur, people come out of the bank and they typically take a hard right and come out here to Main Street. If they want to turn and go south, they can. Well, when the new improvements occur, you're not going to be able to turn south from there. So people will be able to come out and just continue to take a right if they want to go north, but should they want to go south, they're going to need to go down and around. And there's going to be a new drive that's just east of the recycle center that's going to exit and enter onto the new 40 highway realignment. And they'll be able to go up there, come out and catch a light that will be there to be able to turn left and go south onto Main Street. So they're just wanting to make sure for their own protection that the city doesn't mind that they have access to our property to be able to come and go from their facility. They've been doing this already. I didn't see that it would be an issue. Staff was kind enough to go ahead and prepare this with the assistance of Ken Murphy and Rick Arroyo, our engineer. We drew this up. The agreement that you have in front of you this evening is a general legal description. What the bank would like to do once the drive is complete, they, their plan is to hire a surveyor to come out and do the exact measurements of what that ingress egress would be so we can actually put an appropriate description on it. At that time, once that is complete, they would come back in front of the city and ask to amend this ordinance with the appropriate legal description. First one.
How come this never was done when they built the building? How come that?
One of the things that they told me was they believed that at this time, a lot of new people since then, and the officials at State Bank stated that they believed it was a gentleman's agreement and a handshake of, yeah, sure, no problem, you can use the city property to be able to get in and out of the bank. And until they actually looked into it, did they realize that there wasn't a formal agreement? So they just thought it would be cleaner to.
Did they share any cost of repaid or anything like that?
No. At this time, we have quite a bit of traffic that comes in and goes. Actually, one of the things that I asked staff to look into was, I asked, is this actually a road here or is this just considered a parking lot? And actually, it's just considered a parking lot. It's not considered a road. It's just the city's parking lot. And staff and I actually did discuss the cost of that, but no more than what I believe the traffic is that the bank represents from the regular traffic that kind of does on city property at this time. I don't think there would be any additional underground here.
Is there a time limit on that or is that just all the banks there, it's always going to be there or we'll decide on that?
But it's just for State Bank?
Yeah.
So if they were to.
It runs with the land. As long as they own it.
As long as they own it. Yeah, it talks about the duration. The easement shall run with the land. However, this easement may be terminated at such time that State Bank and Missouri shall ban it or have no further use of the easement for a period of 10 consecutive years. Upon occurrence of the foregoing, grantor may exercise its rights in accordance with section 527.188 in Missouri state statutes.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Six zero, first. Second reading, Bill B-12-12. It will be ordinance 2212. It is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute an ingress and egress easement with State Bank of Missouri. Second reading, ordinance 2212.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill 12-12 for its second reading, bring it back, making it, I mean, making it ordinance 2212.
I have motion Alderman Headley to approve Bill 12-12 for its second reading, making ordinance 2212. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Beebe.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Bill B-11-14. First reading.
B-12-14?
Sorry.
B-12-14?
Yeah, that was the one that we corrected.
12-14. 12-14. First reading, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase two mobile communication radios and five portable communication radios from Motorola Incorporated. First reading, Bill B-12-14.
I move that we accept Bill B-12-14 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion Alderman Totten to approve Bill B-12-14 for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion?
I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention that due to the purchase of these items, wanted to just let you know that this is being purchased from a grant. It's the local law enforcement block grant that is the Justice Assistance Program. And the very small percentage of it is coming from the city's budget, a little over 14 percent, and which also equates to $1,473.30 on behalf of the city, and it is budgeted.
And we've already received a check from the government for it, so.
That was my question. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Six zero, first. Second reading, Bill B-12-14. It will be ordinance 2213. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase two mobile communication radios and five portable communication radios from Motorola Incorporated. Second reading, ordinance 2213.
I move that we accept bill number B-12-14 for its second reading and make it an ordinance number 2213.
I have motion Alderman Totten to accept Bill 12-14 for its second reading, making ordinance 2213. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion?
Chief, I do have a question for you. Just something we're going to see you replacing every year, a little bit at a time.
The radios are off and on, not necessarily. We can use that, this particular grant for various equipments. And the reason why we utilize it this year is because we did have quite a few that we need to replace. Kind of brings us back to our discussion that Deputy Chief probably brought up with NIMs compliance with radios and narrow banning requirements for that.
Right.
Yeah, we're, this is kind of going to complete that.
They still bringing in the new.
With radios, it's always something more and more.
But we can plan on seeing this next year.
I don't know if we're going to see this many. Well, you know, it's hard to say. But yeah, we might see a few radios.
Thanks, Chief.
Any additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
West.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Beebe.
Yes.
Six zero. Bill B-12-15. First reading, an ordinance reappointing Jamie Rensenmeyer as the clerk of City of Grand Valley. First reading, Bill B-12-15.
I move that we accept Bill B-12-15 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion Alderman Beebe to accept Bill 12-15 for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
That's good. Thank you.
That just gives us the privilege, anybody needs to call and ask questions, feel free to do so.
Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Six zero, first. It's not on for second. Bill B-12-16. An ordinance appointing Ms. Khalila Holland as deputy clerk, City of Grand Valley. First reading, Bill B-12-16.
Mayor, I move we, I move we accept Bill 12-16 for its first reading, bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion Alderman Headley to accept Bill 12-16 for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
Now, that's, this is done so that she can officially replace Jamie if Jamie has an illness or has to go someplace to this place. That's what this is doing. Well, I wanted to make sure they knew that.
Seeing additional discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Six zero, first, Mayor.
Seeing no resolution, next item on agenda is city attorney's reports.
Nothing to report.
Next item is city administrator and staff reports.
Yes, this evening, I really chief in our process of mine, the board.
Yes, Mayor Board, I did lay out a copy of this. I have two different events that I'm going to talk about that are upcoming, kind of go in order on that. Saturday, April 21st at 10 o'clock in the morning until noon, we're going to be probably right between the community center and the city hall parking lot here. We're going to have the shredded company truck, one of those big shredding trucks that will come out. It'll be open to anybody in the community. They can bring stacks of mailbag statements, old checks, records, items they want to get shredded that they have. And we can get that taken care of for them at no cost to anybody in the community. And as well, we're going to have a drug disposal table. Now, this is not for illegal drugs to come forward. If anybody wants to bring us illegal drugs, we'll gladly arrest them right there. But this is for attorney and unwanted prescription medications that people may have, and we'll take them from them and dispose of them in a proper manner. So, but it is only for two hours, but each hour was donated by, State Bank paid for one hour and the Bank of Grand Valley paid for one hour. So we want to thank them very much for doing so. This idea came from Dave Starbuck, our VIPS coordinator and, or citizen, I'm sorry, our crime prevention coordinator, and he's also the VIPS coordinator. He spoke with Chief Greg Mills in Riverside, and they had this event here about a year ago, and they said it was really successful. They had it for about two hours and it's pretty amazing how much they can accomplish They had it for about two hours, and it's pretty amazing how much they can accomplish and get shredded in just two hours. So I've never been to it, never seen it happen, so it'll be really interesting to see.
Do you have to be resident of Green Valley?
I don't know that we're going to be IDing people or anything like that. I mean, we hope that stays within the community mainly. We don't really want to open it up to Independence and Blue Springs and everybody else. But I don't know that we put any checks and balances into place in that, and this is kind of bold pointing it. We're going to get some more detailed information, which of course we'll get out to Chris Fisher and the point and have them put that in there. That is something I could check into, and I don't know if we're actually going to be checking people's IDs. Our VIPS, or several of our VIPS are going to be out there volunteering and helping out with this as well. So this is just kind of an initial introduction to this, but it is coming up, and we'll get some more information to you. So, real quick, second event that's coming up, May the second, will be discussed at the next senior lunch in April through Midwest Heart Care and HCA hospitals, which numerous hospital research, Overland Park, Lee Sommet Hospital, Nor Medical Center, some in the area here that are in the HCA system. They have a health screening van, or I'm sorry, a bus that's going to be coming out on May the second, and it's going to be here, I believe, for about eight or nine hours on that day. I'm not sure what day of the week that is. But it is, what they do, a battery test for ultrasound test for your heart and your arteries, and it's at a very much discounted rate for doing that. There is a cost to it. I think for six tests, it's a hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which is generally about a little over a two thousand dollar test. And there's also a five-year disease risk and lipid panel, which is about a ninety-nine dollar charge as well. So anyways, again, Center Point, we'll be coming out and discussing that in April at the senior lunch to kind of explain that a little bit more. And between that timeframe, we're going to identify an area that we're going to get the bus to park at, so that people on the roadways will be able to see it as well, huh?
Yeah, it's not small.
Yeah, it's not small. And they, at the last board meeting, I was at Center Point, Blue Springs just did it not that long ago, they had about fifty people go through theirs, and they said they ended up referring about thirty out of those fifty people to different specialists and whatnot after they did the test. They kind of were surprised with that number, they said it was a pretty large number that people needed to be referred, but it's a really good thing, so. Outside of that, that's about all I have, unless anybody has any questions on either two of those events. And like I said, I'll definitely get some more information on the shredding a minute to you when it comes out, both of these, we want to get into local newspapers as well, so.
Shannon, do you have one?
I'll pass that by, you better announce.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we, yes, thank you. We do have our citizens' police academy getting ready to start up. We still would like more people to join, we have plenty of space available. I gave Alderman Totten a, several of them to go beat the streets and pass them out, and hopefully try to recruit some more people, so. I don't have the date in front of me, I want to say it's the first part of April, I think it starts.
When, twelve week academy, April the fourth to June nineteenth?
There we go.
I saw you from six to nine P.M.
So, please, if you want to sign up, let us know. Thank you very much.
I have a few items for the board this evening. As you may have seen in the great lightpoint paper, on Friday, February thirteenth, we were fortunate enough to have all the third graders from Stony Point Elementary School come and visit us, and they're beginning to learn about their local government, and hopefully progressing their way up through local, state, and federal government, and we were fortunate to have the first ones. The most exciting part that they had was they all got to come up and sit in your chairs and talk about their future and how they want to get there and make decisions, so. It was a great time, all staff did a great job, I want to take the police department again, Officer Larkin assisted, Pam Schratt assisted, as well as Jamie and myself, so it was a good time. Another item that I wanted to bring to your attention, you may or may not have heard, we were contacted by the Chamber of Commerce as well as the point, they wanted to meet the candidates tonight, and that is the evening of March thirteenth. It will be held in this room, and we worked with the community center and just felt that this would be the better, the developed bond, I even felt this would be a better location. We won't actually be using the bench, we'll be bringing tables down here for all the candidates to sit behind, and I wanted to let you know that that will be going on here that evening. Another item that's coming up, that I alluded to two weeks ago, is the commuter rail event, executing and doing a open house on that, that is scheduled for March twenty-first, and that will be at the community center. I will be getting that information to our neighbors to the east and west of Oak Grove as well as Blue Springs, and inviting their citizens to attend that open house as well. That will be held from five to seven in that evening. And speaking with Jackson County, County Executive Mike Sanders will be here that evening to kick it off.
All the time on the March thirteenth, the Sunday community candidates, what's done?
Six to eight, I think it's at six.
Six to eight?
Yeah.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
May I tell all the aldermen that the, all of this information that was just discussed is on calendars that are provided to you, so if you don't have that information, you can check your calendars, and they'll be on it. Is that fine?
And next up is Board of Aldermen reports and comments, Alderman Bibi?
None, it's not the people.
Alderman West?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Hedley?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Scully?
Listening at this time.
Alderman Totten?
Yes, I'm going to talk about our meeting we had with the mayor, with the businesses. I'm proud to say that we hooked up some of our businesses with businesses, and the master carpet care and company is taking care of EWS's carpet and also going to take care of their boss's home's carpet, so we got business, and that's where the one previous, I found my roofer, and he's doing a second rook, and we're going for a third with somebody else that we know. And everyone I talked to had a wonderful time, and really appreciated Richard bought up that his wife had never met Jamie or Alexa, and they really enjoyed that, and the gentleman that is with our...
Mr. Martinet.
Mr. Martinet. There were several that had complimented on him, so I think you did real well, and I want to thank you for, and by the way, Rock and Roll Foods did an excellent job too, I'm glad I wasn't on you guys' diets, we're competition.
Didn't bother us.
Thank you.
Oliver Schaefer?
Not at this time, here.
My name is, I'm just a marriage report, I just have a couple things I need to bring by the board. I recently had a business contact me regarding our, right now, our current policy of laws, I'm not correct on this. And so we try to stay local with Green Valley when purchasing items, if they can stay within five percents, five percent, right?
If they're in Green Valley.
If they're in Green Valley, they can stay within five percent, five percent cost. Well, this business was concerned because being a small business, they cannot compete with larger businesses, I guess, within the five percents number. So I told them that was not a decision that I could make, that the board wished to change that policy to increase that number in the future, they could. So I'm just bringing that to your attention, and not that any action needs to be taken on that anytime soon, but just be thinking about that, if that's, you know, something in the future that we want to revisit, so. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that, or...
I do think we need to raise that, so it'd be a little bit more competitive for the smaller business.
How much would we have, would we have to raise it to?
I don't know, I mean, probably get different numbers from different businesses, I would assume.
The board would like to be happy to reach out to our other neighboring cities, metropolitan region, and find out what their local preference percentage is at, to see if we are in the ballpark, if we're too low, if we're too high.
I don't think it'd be an idea.
I just, I don't want to be perceived as playing favorites with one local business or another, that they close to by having yourself. That's it.
I understand the importance of purchasing local, but I will warn you that the five percent that you're at now, I think is very fair. It's been a while since I've looked at this issue, so I'm hesitant to go very far, but in the past, when I looked at this, five percent was high, and typically what you saw was anywhere from two to three percent preference, but I'm definitely happy to check on it and let you know.
Thank you, Allison.
Next item then is, I would like to instruct staff, if there are no objections from the board, to start the process of looking at, taking the needed steps to waive various fees for the time being as we go through our comprehensive plan, and we look at possible changes that need to be made to the Overly District. I know there's a lot of, I know there's several businesses that have came to me saying they would like to do things, but they don't, you know, pay the fees of all the variances. I think, you know, and I know we keep stretching this out, how long it's going to take us to redo this, to redo the comp plan, I think we're going to start in May, but that's going to be a long process, so. There's no objections, I'd like to instruct staff to start the process of, I think there's some needed steps we need to do in order to make that happen, correct?
That's correct. Mayor, you did mention this a short while ago, and one of the things that staff has been working on is to go ahead and attempt to provide a draft amended fee schedule that we can take to the Planning and Zoning Commission to get their feedback and their remarks, so that we can bring this back to this board. I have talked to Ken Murphy, who's your liaison from staff to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and asked him to place this on their next meeting, which is the evening of March fourteenth, and we'll be taking that to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I've talked to your liaison from the board as well, Alderman Schaefer, and we'll get their comments and bring that back to you under a first reading on March twenty-sixth.
Just going to write everyone?
That's just going to be for the downtown Overly District businesses.
Well, I think that would have to be part of what we decided, I think, at that time.
What we're looking at right now is the feedback that we've been getting at this point, the reading would say waiving of the variance fee for existing business owners in the Overly District.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I have nothing else. As I stated earlier, we do have a need for an executive session for our first item, legal actions, cause of action, litigation pursuant to section six-one-zero-point-zero-two-one. Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session then? I have motion Alderman Hedley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Oliver Totten. Any discussion?
Hi, colleagues, your time. I can tell you that from this discussion, no decisions will need to come from executive session, and so you'll be able to adjourn at one completion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We do need to poll, Alderman Schaefer? Alderman Totten?
Yeah.
Alderman Scully?